That pounding is to advise our former colleague but forever friend, Sam Hill.
Get the heck out of here.
What's that?
Scoot.
Yeah. That was Bruno, by the way, Sam, that said it. Good evening, folks, and welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled City Council meeting. This meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
We've got a special committee meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, we certainly do. Yes, we have a special committee of the whole meeting this evening. Forgive me, I had those in reverse order. Let the record show that all the aldermen save four. Alderman Singer and Alderman Cummings are present this evening. We have one item of business, and that is item 2A to recommend resolution number 2015-94, authorizing contract for South Fourth Street parking lot construction to Abbey Paving and Seal Coat Company Incorporated in the amount of $430,000, excuse me, $430,484.36 for a concrete parking lot with $113,734.36 of said funds derived from the city's non-home rule sales tax fund. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Cummings and second by, excuse me, by Maladra and second by Marks. Truth be told, it just came from the eye, I can't see, my eye are dilated, I just can't see a thing, it's like, wow. By the way, Flanagan, you look great tonight. Well, that's a decky, I'm sorry, I thought that was. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments for our city engineer?
I will.
All of them, Marks.
Just a couple. Is this the new lot where the neighbors had come in a few weeks ago, a month or so ago, and talked about the landscaping?
Yes, sir.
Have we, have we settled that with them?
Yes, we have.
We have, okay. And then I guess the question's for Mary. We can use from the non-home rule sales tax fund? I thought that was originally allocated just for streets? Isn't that the way the ordinance was written?
It's actually, it's actually for any infrastructure.
Okay.
Technically, it can be used, and we use it for streets and other infrastructure, but we supplement the MFT funds that go toward our street program.
I just wondered, I know that that was passed, and I couldn't remember.
It's just coming out of that fund, but there's money in it.
And we can do that without a problem, because it was infrastructure. Okay.
Exactly.
My questions are solved. Easy.
Also, I need to note that there was an error in the resolution title. All the recommendations are recommending Abbey paving. I made a mistake in the preparation of the resolution and used a different contractor's name, so that's why you have a revised resolution at all your seats.
Alderman Bruno.
Yes.
Brian, so just for the edification of anyone watching, so the increased amount, in your mind, the concrete paving would return more than that, what, $30,000?
Yes, sir. For $30,000 over the life of that parking lot, we believe it'd be a lot easier to maintain it, and it'll be a better product in the end, especially at this time of year. We're really running up against time limits as far as when the asphalt plants are open, and we're confident that they can get the concrete in this year.
I always like to play the long game. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else on the dais? Alderman Kilburg.
Are we bringing much fill in there? There's going to be quite a bit of fill, right?
There are. There are significant areas of fill in there. If you can visualize the lay of the land right there, there are sections that, depending on looking.
What are your thoughts about letting that fill settle before we put concrete over it? My experience is that with concrete, or with fill, normally if you let that settle for six months to a year, you're going to get into less of an issue as relates to cracking and a lot of the bad things that can happen to concrete.
We're confident that the way we have the specifications written, we require them to compact it in layers as they're building the retaining walls and terraces. We're confident that we won't have a big issue, especially if we're using concrete. It'll bridge a lot of those areas that have minor deformations in.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Simonean.
Thank you, Mayor. I may have asked this question to you, Mary, earlier, a little while back, but did we allocate $200,000 something thousand of this project to Route 31?
No. The council voted to take action to allow that money to be used if necessary, but it was not.
Okay, so we don't have to do anything to bring it back?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
If no one objects, Alderman Bruno for a second time.
The previous question had brought up a more overarching thing that I've been meaning to ask. These types of pavement-type contracts, we have performance clauses in there if the thing goes to heck, and, you know, over the next winter, you know, they'll come in and make it right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? Anyone in the audience? We have a motion by Maladra, a second by Marks. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Dar Berka?
Aye. Aye.
No, I, they're...
So, sorry.
We all set?
Yes, we are.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jim Merdecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonean?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye. I was waiting.
Dramatic pause for you.
Yeah, what a pause for you.
Any new business for the benefit of a committee of the whole meeting? If not, a motion to adjourn is in order?
So moved.
Motion by Bruno, seconded by Marks. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Committee of the whole meeting has adjourned. In just a moment, we'll transition to the City Council meeting. Tonight's regularly scheduled City Council meeting is called to order. We kindly ask our city clerk to take the roll call for the record.
Mike Bruno?
Here.
Dar Berka?
Here.
Tom Cummings?
Here.
Dean Kilburg?
Here.
Richard Marks?
Here.
Jim Merdecky?
Here.
Mary Sino?
Here.
Tom Simonean?
Here.
Alderman Singer?
We begin our City Council meetings with the pledge of allegiance, and it would be only fitting that we invite Mr. Sam Hill to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sam. And it's exciting that Mr. Hill is with us this evening, because we get to learn about the Geneva Park District Foundation's Autumn Fair on September 19th. So, Mr. Hill, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
I love the logoed shirt you're wearing.
Yeah, I know, you know, I think it says something about what I do with the Park Foundation, too.
I like it.
So, we're advertising for replacements now.
Oh, for the foundation?
Well, no, I don't know.
I thought you meant football.
They might after this one is over, because I'm kind of wearing down on it. But anyway, we're having our great Autumn Fair at Peck Farm. We've had that fair out there for over 10 years now. It's going to occur on Saturday, September 19th, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. You all have these brochures, I believe. Did you get one, Tom?
Yes, we do.
Good. And so, talking about raffle tickets, that's one of the ways we make some money so that we can pour it back into the Peck Farm project. I remember years ago when we went to Springfield, and we were asking for $30,000. And what we were able to do is to talk to a group of the park foundations throughout the state, and they wanted to know why. And I recall saying that I'm an expectant grandfather. None of my kids are married, but I said, "Within 10 years, I would suspect that I'll have some grandchildren. I want to be able to take them to the Peck Farm and let them enjoy the activities there and the nature programs that are involved." So what we have in this brochure, our basket raffle listing, is a myriad of activities that you can participate in. Each one for you to participate would be worth $5. And you, we need to fill out one of these tickets for each event that you want to place your $5 on. So you can see, some of them are pretty self-explanatory. Golf packages, I'm sorry that Alderman Singer's not here, because there's five or six golf courses listed that I'm sure he would jump at, especially if he only had to pay $5 if he won this ticket. And there's things especially for ladies. Another popular event that we sponsor is the Harrington Inn Escape, which is a one-night stay at the Harrington Inn downtown Geneva. And if you've ever done that, been there, or just walked through, you can imagine how wonderful it is, romantic, and all kinds of wonderful things. Summertime fun, splashing good times. We've got Geneva shops on two of the pages, and then we have camping getaways. We don't have a camping trailer this year, unfortunately. Mr. Simonean enjoyed trying to win that several years ago. And I don't think you won out, did you, Tom?
I don't think I won it.
Oh, okay. Oh, you did win it?
No, I didn't win it.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, I didn't think.
I don't think I did.
No.
Did I?
Well, the guy who proposed it took just the day after we were here talking about it, in the camper. But anyway, no, those things don't happen. And what I have, if you're interested, I have these little coupons, and what we will need is the basket number that you want to place your $5 on, and you can do it more than once if you want. Each one costs $5. And then your name, phone number, and important email address space, so that if we can't catch you on your phone number that you list, we can, should be able to catch you on your email. I would keep this, and I will add these to the buckets that would be located, and you would keep the larger half. So each larger half costs $5. So if you're interested, I'll be around for a while, or you can call me, and I'll try to meet you at your schedule. I know I did that with Alderman Sino last year, and that was certainly a good, good investment on my part, time-wise. I don't know if you won anything, I hope you did. But anyway, you have any questions?
Any questions for Sam?
Yes.
How can people who are watching at home, if they want to buy tickets for the raffle, are they available at Sunset Community Center?
Sunset Community Center, the Persinger Center, yes, or at the farm itself.
Okay.
And so there's three locations, and just get a $5 bill out and fill that in.
Well, I have to say, we're huge fans of Peck Farm. It is a gem here with the Hawks Hollow Playground is about as good as it gets, so we spent a lot of time there this summer, so.
The Park District has earned many awards for that event, that park that we bought 15 or 16 years ago, I guess.
A worthy investment. Thank you, Alderman.
Sure enough. Any other questions? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sam.
I'll be around for a while. Thank you, Mayor.
Give her a lob to Carolyn.
Oh, yeah, thank you. It's nice to see a almost full council group here tonight, and...
We always have two missing, just in case of security issues.
Oh, do you, really?
It's like the State of the Union.
I'm not going to touch that one.
No, you shouldn't.
No.
Thank you. Item 2B is the Community Development Department report, presentation by August David de Groot.
Thank you, Mayor.
How's life with the little one?
It's good.
Yeah?
It's good. I don't want to pick a favorite, but she's a front runner right now.
This is being televised.
She sleeps through the night.
Oh, she does? Life is good.
Life is good.
That's really good.
Yeah.
She's 14, which is impressive.
Yeah, she's 12 years old, so...
Yeah, that's true. That was not the case with the first two. Okay, so when we first started doing these department presentations a few years back, in community development, we decided that we were going to focus on our primary responsibilities and cover a different topic each year. To date, we've presented an overview of the building permit review and inspection process, the plant commission review process, and the historic preservation commission review process. So tonight, I'd like to take a few minutes and just discuss the planning division's responsibility in long-range planning. So the planning division is responsible for preparing plans and regulatory tools that guide our future growth enhancement and preservation of the community. It's our goal to do that with as much public input as possible. Community planning by definition is a collective effort. Effective community planning requires significant commitments of both time and financial resources. And for the purpose of the presentation tonight, I'm going to use our recently adopted downtown master plan as the example throughout the presentation. That plan took over two years to complete, and the cost of the planning consultant alone was $125,000. We were fortunate that we were able to get a grant, and we were only responsible to cover 20% of that cost. But nonetheless, that illustrates the type of investment that's required for what was a sub-area plan, not even a comprehensive citywide plan. So considering that investment, it makes sense to consider how that pays off. And planners argue that communities invest in planning because it has social, economic, and environmental benefits, and that those multi-dimensional benefits of planning outweigh the cost of inaction. So looking at social benefits, one of the benefits is that planning encourages consensus on shared goals and priorities. Individuals have conflicting values and priorities, but there's typically general agreement on a wide range of larger issues and opportunities of public consequence. Participatory planning process can educate and inform participants, and should aim to identify areas of agreement to pursue to share vision for the future. Another social benefit is that planning can ensure that the costs and benefits of community growth and change are equally distributed. An example would be providing housing that is affordable to lower-income households. Planning can also promote public health. These two fields have merged quite a bit over the last decade. Planning helps participants understand how their built environment affects their health, whether that's access to parks and recreation, safe transportation, or food. Moving on to economic benefits, planning leads to better decisions about when and where to provide public infrastructure, facilities, and services. We know that some land uses contribute enough tax revenue to cover those costs, and others do not. So planning, the planning process helps our stakeholders understand the fiscal implications of different types of development in different locations. Planning can also set up, set the stage for job creation. Communities need to provide adequate space for businesses to grow, and they need to have a labor pool of skilled workers that employers would be interested in. Planning also protects property values. Many residents or businesses will purchase a piece of property because they appreciate the character of the community and the amenities it has to offer. A good plan would protect that character and build upon those amenities. Planning has environmental benefits. Planning leads to better decisions about how and when to use our natural resources, whether that's water, wind, open space, sunlight, forest preserves. Planning helps stakeholders understand the environmental implications of consuming or conserving those resources. Finally, planning enhances community resilience to natural hazards in a changing climate. Fortunately for us, we live in an area where we don't experience as many natural hazards as some other areas. Other reasons for a long-range plan is that it also gives us the chance to accomplish specific goals, or, at other times, to avoid negative outcomes. It gives the community an opportunity to step back, see the big picture, and by looking at multiple topics over a long time, we have the chance to discuss competibilities and potential conflicts among different goals and policies. Planning also, very importantly, is the legal foundation that legitimizes our local development regulations. I want to expand on that just a little bit. The Standard State Zoning Enabling Act was published in 1926. It was developed as a response to the rapid increase of zoning ordinances being adopted throughout the country after New York adopted the first citywide zoning ordinance in 1916. The Act states that zoning regulations shall be established in accordance with a comprehensive plan, and that this is a fundamental legal basis on which zoning rests. And that's why in our zoning ordinances, in our zoning ordinance and other zoning ordinances, you'll see a purpose statement typically that says the zoning regulations aren't implement the objectives set forth in the comprehensive plan. Ours elaborates on that a little bit more. And that's why with our, our local land use decision-making, we have standards, whether it's a map amendment, PUD, or special use. Each of those various types of decisions the city makes, we consider the conformance with the comprehensive plan. If the request isn't consistent with the plan, the burden's on the applicant to demonstrate why a deviation is appropriate. So you'll see in our reports to the plant commission or to the committee of the whole, we typically include a map of the area, the comprehensive plan and surrounding properties. We'll include a staff analysis on conformance with, with the comprehensive plan. But that's not to say that the comprehensive plan is a crystal ball. Plans are developed based on our, on the participation of interested people, stakeholders at the time, and the best information available at that time. So there's always going to be unexpected challenges, unanticipated outcomes, or just alternatives that were not considered. For example, the downtown plan has been amended several times since 2012. Park Place is a good example. The plan showed townhomes along the frontage of the block south of Wheeler Park. The project that was proposed was townhomes on the entire block. It's not exactly what was reflected in the plan, but the plan really did provide the foundation for the applicant to approach the city with the concept to expand townhomes to the entire block. It also provided the foundation for the public and the city to evaluate that request. Looking at Seventh Street Terrace, this is the southeast corner of James and Seventh Street. The plan called for the property to be redeveloped, but it called for residentially scaled commercial development. What was proposed was, was townhomes at this location instead. And again, here, the plan provided the foundation for the applicant's request. Townhomes are residentially scaled, but the plan also shows townhomes, as you can see in the photo on the left, across the street on James Street. And of course, the city evaluated the request against conformance with the comprehensive plan, too, and amended the plan with that request. Most recently, the Fourth Street parking lot, which was discussed just, just a few minutes ago, the plan called for townhomes at this location, but given the need to provide more commuter parking and the lack of opportunities to do so near the station, the city amended the plan to provide parking at this location, because providing additional parking was also a goal and objective stated in the downtown plan. So before going too much further, I just wanted to do a very quick run-through of the, the planning process that, that we went through for the downtown master plan. This is an outline of the original plan process for the downtown plan. It involved a lot of community outreach through social media, online questionnaires, stakeholder and key person interviews, and three community workshops. What we wound up doing, as far as community outreach goes, was much more than that. We included an elected and appointed officials workshop, presentations to the Lions Club, downtown merchants meetings, downtown property owner meetings, downtown business owner meeting. I think tallying all the ones I could, I could recall on the file, we had at least 21 public meetings seeking input on this plan. While community involvement is the single most important factor in a long-range plan, it's also important to make sure we have up-to-date information and we're making informed decisions. The existing conditions report that was developed for the downtown plan was 106 pages long. I'm just going to kind of quickly go through some of the items that were covered in that report. We reviewed the city's past plans and studies, looking for areas to build upon recommendations included in those plans, and to make sure the plans did not conflict with goals, objectives, or policies in those plans, or if they did, to understand why we're moving in a different direction. Sorry, that doesn't show up very well, but we, we took a detailed look at our zoning ordinance regulations to understand how those regulations relate to the desired type of development we want to see in the downtown area. We, of course, looked at existing land uses and development. We mapped out the historic district, identified significant buildings, buildings that ought to be preserved and/or adaptively reused. We looked at parking access and circulation, including weekday counts of on-street parking, counts in public parking lots, and more. We looked at downtown activity. We tried to look at what the activity generators were in the downtown area, what businesses were open on the weekdays, and what their hours were on the weekends. We had both a retail market analysis done and a residential retail market analysis done. We tried to identify catalyst sites, opportunity sites, as they're called in the downtown plan. These were sites that were either vacant or underutilized, but we also looked at them in relation to property ownership, so adjoining parcels that were under unified ownership might represent a larger opportunity for the city. And that's, you know, planning is taking all of that information and more to the community and discussing issues and opportunities for that area or for the, for the city as a whole. And through that discussion, we developed goals and objectives that summarize the community's long-term vision for growth or preservation or change, and we set the stage for future policy considerations. A goal is a general statement about a desirable future condition. For example, the first goal in the downtown plan is to preserve downtown's authentic character, general enough. An objective is a statement of a measurable outcome in furtherance of a certain goal. So for example, the first objective tied to that goal is that we encourage preservation and adaptive reuse of historic and architecturally significant buildings. Some argue that objectives are just as general as goals and are often confusing. And I would agree. And that's why plans now, they didn't use to, but most plans now will include a detailed implementation section in the plan. And our downtown master plan does do that. Again, community support is the most important factor that influences if and when a plan recommendation will be enacted, but an implementation program like we've included can help organize our local efforts. So the downtown plan includes detailed action steps or strategies for each goal and objective. It identifies possible partnerships to help implement those, those action steps, and each one is prioritized, is either short-term, midterm, or long-term. And these prioritized action steps are really what we take as, as staff, as kind of our, our marching orders, our work order. And we understand that as, as times change and budgets change, our priorities will also change, which is why we discuss these with the city council at our strategic planning session each fall. So an example of some of these action steps, again, building off that first goal of preserving downtown's authentic character, the action steps were to update the architectural and historic survey for the historic district, update the nomination filed with the National Register, and update the city's historic preservation ordinance. Action steps tied to goal number two, which is to strengthen downtown's role as a central business district, include looking at the potential of establishing a business district, and the potential of expanding the East State Street TIF district to, expanding it west to the Fox River to, to help facilitate redevelopment along East State Street. That one, we actually amended that a little bit to create a new TIF district rather than expanding the existing one. So far, the action steps that I've, I've stated are all things that we are kind of in the process of working on, but this one, I thought, was important because it's something we looked at a few years ago but did not actually adopt or implement. The action step called for staff to communicate the potential benefits of encouraging retail sales tax generating businesses on the first floor of commercial spaces along State Street to prepare a zoning ordinance amendment that would not allow for additional offices or banks to locate on the first floor. And if you recall, we took a really detailed look at that a few years ago. We had several public meetings, and ultimately decided not to go ahead with that zoning ordinance amendment. But I, I still consider that a success, successful implementation of the plan, because we, we looked at it in more detail, we had the public discussion, and decided not to move forward with it based on that information. So I'm sorry if I got a little long-winded here on long-range planning, but I'll just summarize the, the key points here. Communities that do not plan are often forced to deal with problems reactively and are less likely to seize opportunities for transformative and positive change. Planning is not a crystal ball. There's always unexpected challenges and unanticipated outcomes or alternatives that can be considered. But plans based on the best available information at the time, and that have an inclusive process, will offer social, economic... We had several public meetings and ultimately decided not to go ahead with that zoning ordinance amendment. But I still consider that a successful implementation of the plan because we looked at it in more detail, we had the public discussion, and decided not to move forward with it based on that information. So I'm sorry if I got a little long-winded here on long-range planning, but I'll just summarize the key points here. Communities that do not plan are often forced to deal with problems reactively and are less likely to seize opportunities for transformative and positive change. Planning is not a crystal ball. There's always unexpected challenges and unanticipated outcomes or alternatives that can be considered. But plans based on the best available information at the time and that have an inclusive process will offer social, economic, and environmental benefits that outweigh the cost of inaction. A comprehensive plan is the foundational policy document for local government. It establishes a framework for us to guide public and private decisions about future growth enhancement and preservation. And finally, I think it's our collective responsibility to make sure that we're using that framework in our decision-making and to take action to make sure we're implementing our approved plans. And I personally feel we do a good job of doing that here, and why I like working here. With that, if there's any questions?
Comments or questions for Director De Groot?
All right. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave.
Item four, amendments to the agenda. Any amendments this evening, ladies and gentlemen? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this city council and can be considered enacted upon with one motion.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Bruno, seconded by Alderman Sino. Any questions or comments regarding the omnibus agenda? You thought I was going to mess that up, didn't you?
I thought that eye doctor drops really bad.
We have no questions, no comments? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Merdecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonean?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Motion passes with eight affirmative votes and two absent. Item 11A is to recommend resolution number 2015-94 authorizing contract for South 4th Street parking lot construction to Abbey Paving and Seal Coat Company, Incorporated, in an amount of $430,484.36 for a concrete parking lot with $113,734.36 of said funds derived from the city's non-home rule sales tax fund.
So moved.
Motion by Marx?
Second.
Seconded by Bruno. Questions or comments other than what we heard 37 minutes ago? Seeing none, hearing none, Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Merdecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonean?
Aye.
Motion passes with eight affirmative votes and two absent. According to my rulebook, we jumped down to item 13, new business. Is there any new business this evening from anyone regarding anything? Alderman Simonean?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to have a point of clarification for our meeting next week on the 14th regarding HPC. Are we just discussing what was presented last time? Or are we discussing the entire HPC?
Whole ball of wax.
So districts?
Yeah, everything's on the table next week.
Everything's on the table?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
You'll notice that the document Mr. De Groot forwarded us today has not been amended in any way, shape, or form.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, well, the new items that we haven't yet discussed?
So the individual landmarking, the historic districts are not up for discussion? It's just what Mr. Lambert and Mr. De Groot presented to us a couple of weeks ago?
We're trying to get through the rest of the ordinance with any other issues so that they can bring everything back that we've gone over. So rather than backtracking, we're continuing to go forward.
I understand. I just want to make sure I got my arms wrapped. So individual landmarking and districts are not up for discussion?
Correct. It's just anything that we haven't discussed to date.
Okay, thank you.
And by other, of course, I suspect there's a whole heck of a lot, so.
Okay, thank you.
And then we'll come back with everything.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Today is the anniversary of Gerald Ford pardoning Richard Nixon, so I asked for your pardoning me for my bad eyesight today. No comment from you, Simonean?
Are you assuming the role of Nixon?
No.
Because if so, I'll be more than happy to assume the role of Ford.
Is there a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Seconded by Sino. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.